They're all kind of the same.
Let's call the meeting to order. We're all present, Melissa.
Okay.
Item two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular season agenda of April the 3rd, 2018. Anybody? Item three, present and discuss the Cola Lake Phase Two update. Chris?
Thank you, sir. Getting to be a regular thing here.
Should be.
Yep. We're going to go through a few of the things that we've wrapped up here. We'll talk about the review of demand. It has changed a little bit, but not much. The phasing and then some tools that we can use for decision making. These are the two critical questions that we really need to get to before we move on. Okay? Can we actually feel like that is a good number? And are we comfortable with that? And if so, what does that impact to the rest of our CIP budget? And can we live with it? And do we think we're doing justice to the citizens as well? The residents here? Okay? Michael?
Thank you, Chris. Just a reminder of where we're at in the program. We're in Phase Two. Primary goals of Phase Two were to prepare the 30% design. That was submitted in December. Update the cost opinion from a capital standpoint as well as O&amp;M. That was done in December. Knowing that that project, the full build-out 2072 design horizon, would not be an executable program, the Phase Two scope of work for us also involved developing an executable program or a phased approach to implementing the full build-out Cola Lake water supply program. We are, I dare say, complete-
I believe we are.
...with the development of an executable plan with several options to choose from. Just a quick reminder that the city staff has updated the current demand projection from the original water master plan, which showed a high demand projection, a moderate demand projection, and a low demand projection. This was updated as recently as last week or yesterday.
Actually, it was updated, Maroli updated it yesterday. What we talked about last time we were here was that the current demand was at 9.1 million MGD average. It's now up to 9.5. And I know you may wonder why we keep using this old chart. For us, it's the baseline. It's what we started to, what we always want to measure ourselves back to. You'll recall that what we started with was the red line. And looking at the high-demand scenario and where we're at today is looking more at the current demand scenario and projecting it forward. Some of the key program priorities that we kept in focus while we were developing these phased approaches. Let's start with the top left-hand box there and water quality. All of these phased approach options need to focus on ensuring that we have safe water quality and a robust water treatment plant. And what I mean by robust is a multi-barrier approach to addressing things like disinfection byproducts, turbidity, pathogens, and potentially taste and odor as well. The other key program priority is capacity. We just looked at that current demand chart. If we project that forward, the 2047 average day is approximately 12.6 million gallons per day. If you look at the 30-year horizon, which was further than the chart went out, it's about 13.8 million gallons per day on an average. And the max day capacity needs for 25 years and 30 years are reflected there. It's 20.9 and 21.7 respectively. So that's a key component that we have to keep in focus is capacity. Cost, obviously, has been a major driver. The whole reason why we're doing a phased approach is to meet a cost expectation. And at the time when we started the phased approach evaluations, $300 million was the target. And then, obviously, and finally, the last key priority in the program is to maintain schedule. And in order to do so, we need to be operational. We need to be moving water through the water treatment plant to the tap in the year 2022. So taking that focus and drilling down into capacity, compliance, and needs in a little bit more detail, we wanted to make sure that all the options had the ability for the pipeline to supply water for at least 50 years, if not beyond 50 years. We really only want to do that one time, that 70-mile pipeline. I mentioned earlier the robust Safe Drinking Water Act compliance. And then there are some desperately needed improvements within the existing storage and distribution system in order to make this program all come together to allow us to blend well water with surface water. All the options that I'm about to show you range in cost from $291 million to $315 million. Now, these are estimates based on the 30% design, and they're all in $2018. So let's look at these options. There'll be six of them. First one, the configuration of this option is a 30-inch pipeline, no intermediate booster pump station, a 7 million gallon per day water treatment plant, and multi-barrier treatment in the form of ozone and GAC or granular activated carbon. Program cost for option one is $291 million. The initial capacity, the day-one after construction capacity of this project is 7 million gallons per day, meaning that it will last, based on the current green demand chart that we showed a couple of slides ago, to the year 2038. And then your growth will require additional investment in this option. Option two is also a 30-inch pipeline, no booster pump station. However, in this case, the treatment plant capacity is 10.5 million gallons per day as opposed to 7 million gallons per day. Same multi-barrier robust treatment, $299 million in program cost estimate. The initial capacity here is also only seven, however. Even though the water plant is 10.5, the initial capacity is seven because there's no intermediate booster pump station. So you're investing a little bit more in the treatment plant, but you can't use it all until the year 2038 when that growth outruns the 7 billion gallon per day capacity and that intermediate booster pump station is needed to be added. Option three, we jump up to a 36-inch pipeline. Still no booster pump station, a 10.5 million gallon per day water treatment plant, but very critical that you notice that this only has a single barrier of treatment. This does not have ozone. And its capacity is 9.2 million gallons per day, which will take you, based on your current city-derived demand curve, to the year 2053 before growth in the community would require additional investment. Option four, back to a 30-inch pipeline. This time, we put a single booster pump station in. We have the 10.5 million gallon per day water treatment plant, and we have the multi-barrier treatment approach. This program cost estimate is $305 million. Its initial day-one capacity is 10.5 million gallons per day because we have added the booster pump station now and we have the water treatment plant capacity to do so. And this one will take you out to the year 2063. Option five, back to a 36-inch pipeline, no booster pump station, 7 million gallon per day water treatment plant with multi-barrier treatment, 307 million, 7 million gallon per day capacity, and the 7 million gallon per day triggers again is the year 2038. And finally, option six is the full-size 36-inch pipeline, no intermediate booster pump station, a 10.5 million gallon per day multi-barrier approach water treatment plant for $315 million in program costs, an initial day-one capacity of 9.2, and a phased life expectancy to the year 2053 based on the current demand. Now, there's a lot of information up there. So we thought we'd take a look at just kind of showing you some of the differences between each of these options.
Michael, option one and two look exactly alike, except for the 10.5 million gallons.
Yeah. It's got a little bit larger water treatment plant, Mayor. So the priority focus in option one is water quality and cost. It's below the $300 million initial target, and it has a multi-barrier treatment approach for water quality. What it sacrifices in doing so is pipeline capacity and treatment capacity because it's a little smaller project. It's only a 7 million gallon per day capacity on day one. Option two, priority focuses on water quality, meeting the $300 million cost, an increased treatment capacity. It's larger than the 7 million gallon per day option, but it sacrifices pipeline capacity because it's only a 30-inch pipeline. Is following me where we're, how we're drawing these conclusions here? Okay. Option three meets the capacity requirement because it's got the larger water treatment plant component. It's got the largest pipeline component. However, it fails the water quality priority because it doesn't have the multi-barrier treatment approach. In our opinion, this is not a good option.
At the water treatment plant.
Right. The option three with the 36 and the 10.5 without ozone is not a good option because it sacrifices water quality, and that's just not something we're real comfortable with.
But all these options meet the safe water drinking.
They do.
So we're just concerned about the taste and odor issues?
Well, and just the multi-barrier treatment approach, having multiple barriers to address those items that were in that box in the top left, pathogens, disinfection byproducts, and so forth.
Explain barriers.
Barrier one does a really good job at everything it's supposed to do, and barrier two makes sure that barrier one-
At the water treatment.
At the water treatment plant. Yeah. It's a multi-barrier approach in case something slips through barrier one. Yeah, multi-barrier treatment approach. Option four. The priority on option four is water quality and treatment capacity. The sacrifice on option four is pipeline capacity and cost. What we're saying here is we have water quality covered because we've got the multi-barrier approach. We have treatment capacity covered because we have the 10.5 million gallon per day treatment plant. But we're sacrificing some pipeline capacity because we're not a 36, we're a 30, and we're over 300 million. Option five, the priority here, water quality is met with the multi-barrier approach and pipeline capacity is met because it's a 36. But what we're sacrificing in option five is the treatment plant capacity because it's only seven, and the cost because it's over 300. And finally, option six, the priority of water quality is met. It's a multi-barrier approach. The priority of pipeline capacity is met because it's a 36-inch pipe. The priority of water treatment plant capacity is met because it's a 10.5 MGD plant. The sacrifice with option six is the cost at 315 million.
So what you're actually telling us there, that to add the additional treatment to the water is going to cost us $16 million?
That's it.
Difference between six and two?
No, between six and three.
Okay.
Just a reminder of the timeline again of the program. Based on that green timeline that I just showed you, we have developed the stages by which each of these options would be implemented and the design year, which you would implement the next stage. And I'm not going to bore you with every single option, but I'm going to walk you through option one to show you how this works, and then I'll answer any questions you have about the other options. So option one, stage one is in blue. The initial project, which I described on the previous slides, is a 30-inch pipeline, no intermediate booster pump station, 7 million gallon per day multi-barrier treatment facility. That project will last you to the year 2038. And that is, based on that green demand curve from the previous slide, and that's the end of the blue box. In the year 2038, if growth progresses as anticipated, we'll start stage two, which is the red box. The red box indicates that your next investment as a result of growth will be to add an intermediate booster pump station, to expand the water treatment plant to 3.5, buy an additional 3.5 million gallons per day, to take your program capacity to 10.5 million gallons per day, which is about the year 2063. Stage three, another 3.5 MGD plant expansion, some intake pumping capacity, some blended storage expansion, and a second intermediate booster pump station to run the program capacity up to 14 million gallons per day, which would be, take you through the year, it's like 2087, 2088, where you would then go into stage four, which is the full build-out of the water treatment plant by adding a 7 MGD expansion, additional terminal storage reservoirs, blended storage, high-service pumping capacity to meet the full program build-out. And based on the green staff updated demand curve would be the year 2136. So based on that projection, that demand projection, this is truly a long-term solution, all six of these. Nobody can say that the city of Enid didn't go back and have vision for their future water supply. Option two is very similar as is option four, five, and six. I do want to spend a little bit more time on six, though. So this is based on, it's that moderate or higher demand curve versus the city demand projection in green. We moved forward with option six, the $315 million program. The first milestone in that one would be when the treatment or the demand in Enid met 9.2 million gallons per day, and it would require a growth investment in the form of an intermediate booster pump station to be built to meet demands greater than 9.2. And that would be necessary in approximately the year 2048. The next growth investment for option six would be in the year 2053, and that would be a capacity expansion at the water treatment plant. The next growth advancement, investment would be in the year 2087, and that again would be a capacity expansion at the water treatment plant, additional pumping at the intake pump station, and another intermediate booster pump station. And then the final growth investment to meet the full 21 million gallon per day build-out capacity would be, take us through the year 2136.
The lifespan of the pipeline we're building is only 50 years.
That's right. That's right. But what this also tells you, Commissioner, is that if you're anywhere between the red and the green line, if your growth changes, then you have the option to back some of these up, or you have the option to put, if it stays, if it goes below the green line, you have even more of an option to defer some of those investments.
2087, those babies haven't even been born. You'll be 69 years old.
So, again, just to revisit, option six provides a pipeline that can supply water for 50-plus years, will require some upgrade in maintenance if it goes beyond too much further than 50 years, as Ben pointed out. Option six provides a robust multi-barrier treatment plant for meeting the Safe Drinking Water Act. And option six addresses those desperately needed improvements in the existing distribution system infrastructure. I had a question about energy cost associated between option four and option six. Option four and six are essentially the same from a treatment capacity standpoint, from a robust multi-barrier treatment standpoint. The only difference in option four and option six is that option four delivers water via a 30-inch pipeline, and option six delivers water with a 36-inch pipeline. So there's a small savings in capital cost associated with 30 as opposed to a 36. But whoever asked this question astutely realized that there are energy implications associated with that capital cost savings because we're trying to, we're still moving the same volume of water, we're just doing it through a smaller area of pipe. Okay? When we do that, we have higher friction losses in that pipe. And that friction loss creates head on a pump or pressure against a pump. And when we have to overcome higher pressures, it takes more horsepower to do so. And that horsepower translates into electrical cost. And so an estimated impact of the electrical cost associated with pumping into a 30 versus a 36 is reflected in this graph over the next 25 years. And the note at the bottom says that the 30-inch pipeline has a $6.8 million greater net present value based on that green curve, that current demand. So it will, it will have 6.8 million more cost than the 36.
What was OGNES' response to that question?
All they're doing is providing us the electrical rates, the current rates, and then we're projecting those forward.
So just, option four, over the 25-year period, is still less expensive. It's still less expensive by half?
About two and a half.
Yeah. And it goes out 20, it goes out 10 years longer than six.
So it's 6 million added to the 305?
Yeah.
Or 6 million added to the 315?
6 million added to the 305.
So it's still cheaper.
It's still cheaper, and it goes out 10 years longer.
Before we have to do anything, yes.
Yes.
It's really more than, it's more than just that, that difference because the cost of borrowing money over that time in the debt service.
What would you recommend?
It goes out, it goes out longer before you have to make the next investment.
Yes.
They ultimately all go out to the same-
Yes.
-target.
Yeah.
But that date on the right reflects when your next investment in that option is. So there's a longer duration before the next investment. You're correct.
And since you're, we are pressing six, I'm assuming that the savings in the extra 10 years, you're still thinking six is better than four?
I do, yes.
Okay.
I don't understand how or why. Oh, you're solely pressing. Pretty clearly.
You guys are going to make the decision. So in the end, it doesn't matter what we press, it comes down to what-
But I don't understand why that's better. I just don't, I just don't get it. I mean, number-wise, it's not even better. I mean, the only thing that's different to me is the size of the pipe, and that doesn't even have that big of an impact. It's still cheaper. I don't, I don't get why that's worse.
The only thing I can answer that with is the size of the pipeline allows more flexibility in the future. But you've seen with any of those options, we go out way, 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 way out in the future.
Based on what we're seeing in demand today.
And you only get a chance to put the pipeline in-
Once.
Once. And if it really only has a 50-year life and has to be replaced, my guess is it'll probably be in the ground longer than that if we get it and will replace sections because that's historically-
What we've seen.
Well, but part of this is also the, we've talked at the last couple of meetings, it's probably as good a place as any. What's, I mean, part of the difference between the 30 and the 36-inch pipelines, the 36-inch pipeline gives us the theoretical ability to provide all the water we need from Cola Lake by virtue of the increased total supply from the pipeline, whereas we are limiting ourselves on the total supply of the 30-inch pipeline. And either way, at least in the short term, still relying on the well field, what's that going to cost to maintain over the same 30-year period? The well field? I mean, that was one of the questions that I wanted answered to.
At least $60 million.
Okay. So what we're still- Right. But I mean, I just, we got to keep that in mind, paying for it over the same time period with the same resources.
Yes.
It's not, either way, it's not 305 or 315 because neither option gets us enough water on their own. We are absolutely reliant on the well field. So either option doesn't look executable to me without another $60 million over the same period. I mean, for the well field. Though, option six looks to me like it gets us closer because we could theoretically get within spitting distance with a 36-inch pipeline of serving Enid only using the lake. I mean, I'm just concerned that we're going to be, we're going to look at, I mean, that 60 million's a lot of money.
Yeah.
We can't afford it.
Explain the 60 million, Tim.
60 million is a number based on well field, new wells every year. We're typically being going about 750,000 a year. So it's looking at about a million for that. There's about a $15 million connection that needs to be done sometime in the future out west, probably to connect the Ames Drummond Field to the Cleo Line. And that's estimated 12 to 15 million. So that's what, that's the estimate we're working on. There may be some other things that pass that estimate to go up, other distribution system maintenance items. But the $15 million distribution connection is intended to eliminate the problem with the replacement of the concrete, the 30-inch concrete.
Exactly. That replaces the Ames Field line.
We've looked at three lakes.
Yes, sir.
And we've looked at expanding the water well fields. And we've looked at this thinking this is what we need to do.
If we can afford it.
If we can afford it.
Exactly.
This is a lot better than $475 million, which-
It's a processor.
Which we can't, we can't handle.
True.
So-
To me, if we can handle 299 million, we need to find a way to handle 315 million.
Well, but Bill, it's not just 315 million. I mean, that's the part of the problem is, is 375 million- Plus interest. Plus interest is really-
It's still better than what we have out there now.
Maybe. I mean, Chris, on option-
Or that we can get to, Ben.
Maybe. On option six, the intermediate booster station, talk to me about ballpark cost and how many additional gallons a day that gets us?
That'll take you from roughly that 10.5 up to the 14 to 18.
Okay.
And then if you add another booster pump station, it's 29.
Okay. But the, and the cost of an intermediate booster-
We estimated those between 15 and 20.
Okay.
Refresh my memory, how much water are we producing out of the well field right now on an average?
Six million.
How much?
How much are you producing?
Anywhere from nine to 12 million gallons.
A day?
On the average.
Yeah, that's a good point. Just to clarify, sometimes we throw out the number, and it's been in these slideshow presentations of a sustained yield of 6.6, 6 million.
6 million.
We intend to continue, Commissioner Ozell's right, leveraging our investment in the well fields to have that 6 million and also use it as a buffer for max day demand.
A buffer for max day and resiliency in the event one end goes down.
30, I'm still thinking about the 36 as opposed to the 30-inch pipe. If you're putting just as much water through a 30-inch as you are a 36, that means higher pressure, right? Does that mean it deteriorates or fails more quickly? I don't know what the engineering side of that is, but it seems to make sense to me that if you're using more pressure, you're going to wear it out faster.
Essentially, yeah. I mean, without going into a lot of detail, there's, you know, higher velocities can create additional wear quicker. Okay. And that's actually been one of the stink increases of our well field is we run that Ames line at such a low pressure.
Yeah.
It stayed together.
And it's for a size of 30.
30?
So if we built a 36-inch pipeline, we could get an additional 4 million gallons a day for an additional 15 to 20 million dollars?
Yeah, I believe that's probably.
Okay. Where is, okay.
But over time, if you add booster pump stations, you could get more water than that with a 36-inch line than a 30.
29.
That's the point of why-
So two intermediate booster pump stations for $40 million gets us additional 8 million gallons over time?
From roughly-
10 to 18?
No, two booster pump stations get you up to 29. One gets you real close to the 18.
Well, I think you said one got you an additional 40, or 4 million gallons a day. You told me it went from 10 to 14 with one station.
Yeah.
Because you're at 10.5 at that line.
And that's the one, yeah.
And that's just one, so one intermediate booster pump station gets you an additional 4 million gallons a day, right? Am I reading that right?
From 9.2 to 14.
Okay. So five, all right. Okay.
And at three, at stage three on option six, you're saying that we would be close to not having to put quite so much into our well fields?
Well, I mean, that's what it feels like is- Well, I mean, that's what it feels like, is if we go with option six, I mean, if we can somehow find the money to do it, but if we can go with option six and poor boy the well field, and if push came to shove, and we had to make some big investment in the well field all at once, there would be a cost benefit of, okay, we invest X in the well field or we invest X in intermediate booster pump station, one or two. But just that, with the risk that the well field either gets too expensive to maintain or produces less, the 36-inch gives us a lot more flexibility.
And a lot of risk.
That, that convinces me on the option six. Not that I have a vote, but more than previous. I mean, if, if, if the reliance on the well field is less, I had seen the reliance on the well field for four and six about the same. That's probably more important than 10 extra years before stage two.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
If you have to put in an intermediate boost pump stations later, how does that, what does that do with the supply of water during that period? I mean, do we go back? Does everything else shut down while you're in construction of another boost, boost station? It just bypasses it, you hook it up when it's done, or?
Yes. The latter, yeah.
Is that a second booster station?
Yeah.
Either one?
The first one or the second one can be built while the system's operating and then just brought online.
Okay.
How much with, with, with two booster pump stations or in the 36-inch line? Did you say we could pump 29 million gallons a day?
On average, yes.
That's good. That takes more investment, but that's good. That's the real
Well, I'm just, you go back to that last slide, I'm just looking at it as, our, our financing on this first phase runs, you know, we're, we're looking at 30, 40-year financing term, kind of depending on which, right? We're at 30 years?
30 years.
So, in 30 years, the first chunk, the 9.2 million gallons a day gets paid for?
Yes.
It's pretty close, yeah.
Or
Almost.
Yeah.
To 2052?
Well, 20, 2028, 2038, 2048. I mean
Yeah, yeah.
We get the first chunk paid for if we've got to, if we can poor boy the well field for the next 30 years, we would actually have money to, um, add those phases on. Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm done.
You just like the colors on this one, right?
I like the colors, yeah. I like colors. Pretty.
Also, I understand there were some more questions asked about reverse osmosis.
Yeah.
So, I, I wanna take as much time as you guys need to talk about this issue. But a few of the talking points that I had kind of off the cuff last month, I put together more formally tonight, and like I said, we'll go as fast or as slow as you guys want on this, but
Don't go too fast.
Essentially, when you compare reverse osmosis to the current, um, any of options, six, the, one through six that we just evaluated, let's just say option six, because it's the most expensive one, and that's the basis of these comments, it's more than $15 million higher in capital cost than that, than that alternative. And a large portion of that is, is a result of the cost associated with disposing of the reject water that comes off the reverse, the RO membranes.
Which gets pumped down the stream.
Which cannot be pumped down the stream. And I'll talk, I'll talk about that in a, in a future, a future board.
Has to go somewhere.
So just raw capital cost, it's $15 million higher. And that does not include the fact that it may require a larger raw water pipeline. We were just talking about 30s and 36s. We may have to do a 36, or we may have to do a 42, because what happens in an RO treatment plant is you bring in 10 gallons of water across the reverse osmosis membrane. You'd be lucky if you get seven gallons of water out of it. Okay? It's not one for one. The treatment plant processes that we've evaluated are nearly one for one, so the water that you deliver to town, you actually end up seeing. Reverse osmosis is not the case. There's a large reject percentage that comes off those membranes. Reverse osmosis purifies the water. Very superior treatment. You're gonna have high purity water, because if removing all the minerals, it's stripping everything from the water. It makes the water very corrosive without those minerals.
Maybe we need to understand how RO works. I'm, I'm not sure I know how it works.
We're using osmotic pressure to push the water molecule across a membrane.
You say across, meaning not through the membrane?
Essentially through the membrane, yes. And what's left behind is everything but H2O. H2O moves forward, and all the minerals that are in the water, impurities that are in the water, calcium, hardness, everything else, it's left behind.
Well, that sounds pretty simple. Obviously, the pressure part is
Operates it, and that's the next bullet. The higher, so what I'm saying on the, let's make sure we understand that, we have to bring, to get 10 gallons of water, we have to bring more than 10 gallons of water to town. That's the point. Because we reject about 30% of what we bring. Does that make sense? Okay. Higher operation and maintenance costs. The osmotic pressure, to generate that osmotic pressure, to push that water molecule across the membrane, is very high pressure and require, is very energy-intensive. The O and M, the energy requirements associated with the O and M cost for an RO plant are twice as high as the current treatment process. Which translates into a lifecycle cost of approximately $100 million more than option six. And then, what about that 30% mayor? We gotta, we gotta deal with that reject, those impurities somehow. We
Give them a simple definition of what that water is.
It's, it's, that water is brackish, uh, high TDS, high salt, high organics.
It's still liquid, though.
It is still in liquid form, yes.
It is not drinkable.
It is not drinkable.
And we have to pay to get rid of it.
And
By deep
And, and so, RO is very popular, RO is very popular as a point-of-use treatment system, meaning in your home. Because you have, you can dispose of that in your sanitary sewer. If everybody in Enid had an RO treatment system in their home, this man over here would have a lot of problems at his wastewater treatment plant. Because all of that brackish water would be in your collection system and eating up the collection system and eating up your, your water treatment facilities. Very aggressive water, very difficult to treat. So we can't dispose of this water at the wa, at the wastewater treatment plant. We can't get a discharge permit for it. We can't, we can't discharge it to Skeleton Creek. The other place you'll see RO used a lot is on the coast, in South Texas and West Coast, where they have an ocean that they can discharge this brackish water to, um, without any issues at all. It's, it's better than the, than the ocean water, uh, from a salt standpoint, from a TDS standpoint, from a volume standpoint. So, we, we're forced to look at deep well injection here, in this part of the country. You guys familiar with deep well injection?
It's not real popular.
Yeah, we have been, okay.
How do we get the water to the weak, uh, deep well injection system?
Well, we have, we have to collect it. When it's rejected from the membranes, we have to collect it, store it, pump it to the deep well injection sites, and then inject it into the ground, deep into the ground. Much like, um, our friends in oil and gas are doing, or trying to.
We're having a hard enough time to finance $315 million. That's $415 million, if we look at it.
Also, guys, remember I talked about all, all the stuff that's removed from the water? It's too, that, that leftover water, that's seven gallons that went through the membrane? It's too aggressive to put into your system. It's dramatically different than what's coming out of the well field. We need to make those waters compatible. We need to make them look as much alike as possible, so that when they go into your, some places, 50, 60-year-old system, that water behaves just like the water that's going in there now does. Because if there's a change in that, that water quality, the consistency, it can still meet the Safe Drinking Water Act and have different consistencies, hardness, calcium, corrosiveness, then we could get some lead and copper corrosion issues and, and, and we don't want to be on the news for people having high lead in their blood.
Ozone issue.
How, how, how if the water is that pure, is it still corrosive? I mean, it looks like
It's aggressive. It doesn't have a stability to it. It's, it's, uh, the, the hardness that's in the water provides it some stability for coating pipes instead of corroding pipes.
I didn't think either one of those things was good.
They're all good in the right amount.
Really?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Okay, so that
From an individual standpoint, people that have, uh, water heaters in their house and all, I mean, they, those could all be subject to failure because all of a sudden, they're gonna have a, a different type of water coming through them that's gonna make, um
Well, they may have that condition now if they have an RO system at their house.
Right.
But what, what I'm saying, Commissioner, is that if, if we just did RO treatment and didn't do any, what we call sweetening of the water post-RO, to add some of those minerals back, to give it that stability to go into your system, then yes, you will have corrosive issues in your pipes and your homeowner's pipes. Now, we're not saying that you're not gonna have hardness with option six. You have hardness now with your groundwater. And a goal of this program is to match the consistency with groundwater as closely as possible, so that you guys have flexibility and leverage in your water supplies without impacting the behavior of your distribution system. This would change that, if we had a reverse osmosis process.
Thank you.
Alright, John?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
Looking at the time, I'm glad I just have one slide, uh, but obviously a very important slide, um
John, you're on TV, so if you could stay by the microphone and podium, everybody TV land can see you in
Okay.
Streaming options.
Use that mic as much as you can.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yeah.
Close enough, okay. Key bullet points tonight. We, we've talked about different-sized projects, talked about an option six that could cost in the $315 million range. So the, the answer to the first question, can we afford $315 million for the project that, um, may be an option or a direction you want to go? And, um, we've spent the last year and a half looking at what financing vehicles make the most sense for the city of Enid. And you have already taken advantage of the Oklahoma Water Resources Board Bond Loan Program to fund the stage of engineering from 10 to 30%. Uh, this is a AAA program, uh, offered by the Oklahoma Water Resources Board. They also have a drinking water loan program that is rated AAA. And in looking at your pro, your costs of this project, uh, we're looking at a three-to-four year period of financings. And those financings will coincide with the, the need for the dollars to be in hand to fund the projects as you bid those projects out. And 2000, I think September of 2014, the city passed water rate adjustments. And the last effective year of adjustments in the volumetric charge is in January 1st of 2019. So in looking at the steps that have been taken by the citizens, uh, that have been taken by city council, you have adjusted water rates, uh, you have taken to the citizens and the citizens approved a effective 1% sales tax. So the question is, are those revenues going to be sufficient to cover the estimated annual debt payments on $315 million? Obviously, rates have, uh, interest rates have fluctuated over the last year and a half. A new president came into office, we had, uh, significant fluctuation. Global concerns have caused rates to go up, go down. More recently, just within the last 10 days, the rates that you see up here, what I wanted to provide is, were rates at today? If rates were to stay in this same area, can you afford $315 million? The rate you see here on a typical bond loan program, loan to the city of Enid, last week, about a week ago, was 3.86%. Rates have dropped 10 basis points. 10 basis points doesn't mean much to everyone, you don't deal with finance every day, but when you're talking $315 million, that makes a significant impact as to answering the question, can you afford this? So the variable's positive today, this is 10 basis points lower, this is under 3% today. We're going to look at, as we go year to year, over the next three to four years, as we determine what projects will be bid out and when will those dollars be necessary, we're gonna look at the two programs here. The drinking water program is a subsidized program that is 80% of whatever the market interest rate, the effective, uh, rate of this program. So as I said, this is at less than 3%. At this point in time, we haven't determined how much the city will borrow from this program. It will be, be dependent on two items. One, the, the availability of dollars for Enid as other cities are competing for those dollars. But as we get closer over the, the next year to two years, we will determine, or over the next, I'm sorry, one to two months, we will determine how much the board feels that they can provide, the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, under this program, which is at the lesser interest rate. We've also talked about federal funding. The city, uh, and working in coordination with our firm, are gonna look at every single potential grant dollar, federal or otherwise, that can be used towards funding this project. But determine, excuse me, by determining the affordability, you have to look at what assumptions are we at today? If we can afford $315 million and it only costs us a little under $18 million a year, and I say only, um, I shouldn't have said only, it's obviously a significant impact. Your sales tax and use tax from the one cent that was, that was approved back in '16 brings in about eight and a half million a year. Your water rate increases that were implemented and are still being implemented through '19, Brit makes up the balance of the $18 million, 17.9 million a year. That's based on some very conservative estimates of growth in your sales tax collections. Statewide, sales tax collections have, have stagnated, uh, but there are many communities that are recovering. And Enid has recovered more recently in their sales tax collections. We've assumed a 1%, very conservative growth in sales tax, but we have also assumed conservatively that, uh, the, um, usage by the various customers within the city of Enid, including all your residential, commercial, and industrial customers, uh, the figure that we use was last fiscal year would generate, if you were to continue to provide or have the consumption range of 1.8586 billion gallons annually, then that, along with sales tax, less any expense assumptions, which we have included approximately 17, or 7.5 million a year. Staff has looked at different levels of needs citywide for capital needs. And, uh, seven, certainly the city has, uh, more than 7.5 million a year, but we had to find a balance as to what can we afford, uh, for this plan, along with providing funds for other capital needs, while at the same time addressing other operational costs of the city, making sure they're adequately addressed, and making sure that existing debt that's outstanding now is funded. One thing that's not shown here is the, if you were to look at four years out, look back, and you're at $18 million a year in actual annual debt payments for this project, you have about 4 million in debt payments that are gonna fall off over the years to come years to come. And what we have not done is taken those dollars in this analysis and applied those dollars to the structure of the new financings. In essence, those are gonna be available dollars for the authority for other capital or debt service needs or operating needs of the city at that time, so...
When do those drop off?
They actually drop off in different years. You have your key note that's about 1.1 million a year, which is the event center, that falls off in 2019, or 2020. It's about 1.2 million a year. The next big loan that falls off is about 350,000 a year, which is the drinking water for the water wells, a project you had done with the Water Resources Board. Now, the, the other big loan that falls off is not gonna fall off until 2030, and that's the 2.3 million for your wastewater treatment plan. But we've looked at different financing models, and do we, do we have a increasing principal payments as those fall off to wrap around? This analysis does not assume that. This leaves those dollars for the other needs of the authority and of the city. And so, with all of this considered, to answer the question of, can we afford 315 million? You can if the rates are in this area over the next three to four years, but we certainly have some very conservative assumptions. Any movement in sales tax collections, you recover at a greater level than 1 percent. Any growth in consumption obviously helps offset what we may have, any type of adjustments in interest rates.
So, that, that assumption's 5 million gallons a day roughly?
Right.
What's the... Okay, back up. The 7.5 million, excuse me, a year, that's current year dollars, you're not building any over 30 years, it's still 7.5 million dollars, and 20 years out, there's no inflation built in, is that correct?
No.
So, it's not the time value, it's not the...
Right, those are dollars that are available.
Those are actual dollars.
Right, these are dollars, so whatever...
I just mean 7.5 million dollars today doesn't go as far as it did 10 years ago and will not likely go near as far as it does in 30 years.
And that's why I wanted to address, as the other debt falls off, when that debt falls off, that's...
This also doesn't address the 60 million dollars we need to put in the well field to keep pumping out of it.
It does, but it addresses as part of those capital needs.
Right, but then if we, you know, even assuming there's no debt service, that gives us 5 and a half million dollars a year for capital improvements, and 7.5 is awfully low to start out with today, and even lower in 10 years and 20 years.
Yes.
I mean, I, this isn't enough money for capital improvements in the rest of the city.
We have more work, yes, to come up with that feasible plan.
And what's the assumption for Coke's water, the water usage built into this model? Potable water usage?
Right now, I think this is including the 0.4 to 1.4, and we're working with them to try and refine what they're actually...
Kind of a big, big spread there.
It is. And they sent us some updated numbers yesterday that we're looking at, trying to incorporate to answer that question.
Okay.
That's a key part of this decision going forward.
I mean, I don't think we can make this decision until we know that.
I agree, and I don't think you should make that decision until we have that, and whatever else, whatever other information is needed to make that decision.
Yeah, I mean, I don't... We also haven't, I mean, we've had some years of flat or negative sales tax. I mean, I'm...
We have, but historically, we've always, historically, well, I'd have to defer to Aaron for historical numbers at some point, until the last few years, prior to years, we had really big increases. I think it's reasonable to assume that we would have at least a 1 percent. Now, John, did you say you built in a 1 percent in your projections?
Yeah, this is 1 percent year over year.
Yes.
And you built in the water rate increases that will still be coming every year after 2019, the 2 percent increase?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I mean, this, this isn't, this to me is not affordable. We, that is not enough, that's not gonna be adequate for our capital needs in the rest of the city for 30 years. I mean, it's just inadequate, especially when you take into account that this will absolutely require us relying on the well field with huge investments that are in no way paid for in this.
Well, I do think that we need to spend more money, but I do know that historically, Aaron has compiled a list of what we've done over the last 10 years or so, and not surprisingly, it's about 7 and a half million a year. Give or take, if we had some debt-funded improvements. But I do agree, particularly now that we're doing the, into the budget cycle, we're starting with about a 45 million dollar capital plan and looking to pare it down to about 7 and a half to 10 million dollars. That would be difficult to do, so...
I'm just not sure we can do that for 30 years.
I guess what we need to know probably from you is what is an acceptable level to get to and what's acceptable for doing capital improvements every year? Is it 10, is it 15?
Well, I mean, I think it changes from, it changes over time. 7 and a half may be good enough this year, but tying the city's hands for 30 years at 7 and a half is not acceptable. And I can't tell you what that, until we know what we're going to be selling to our current industrial users, Coke, I can't...
Coke and somebody else.
I mean, this, this seems just premature until we know what that number is and what we're going to be charging them for gray water and potable water over a long time.
Well, I think we'll focus more on that at the, at the next meeting.
Yeah.
We're not at a decision point yet, still study session, but I do understand that the information that you need and that we all need.
Yeah. I mean, this, this makes me nervous. If this is our best-case scenario, this, this makes me nervous.
It is not going to be an easy project.
Yeah.
For a lot of reasons. Costs a lot of money.
But we can't hamstrudge in the city for the next 30 years just to do this one thing.
And we won't be able to remove all the uncertainty before a decision has to be made, but I agree that we do need to remove as much as we can.
Mm-hmm.
Industrial water usage, refining these, all of these assumptions. And I think engineering, we're getting close to the end. Have you seen the six options we've come up with that seem reasonable?
Yeah.
And at least three or four of them are probably, actually, aren't really good options.
The sixth is great.
But back to the originals, I mean, eventually, we're gonna need more water, and we can't wait 20 years to decide what are we gonna do now?
No.
So, so as hard as the decision is today, it's easier than it will be 10 years from today.
I think we're gonna need more water, but I don't think we're gonna need as much water as they think we're gonna need. I don't think we're ever gonna have 80,000 people in this town.
80,000 what?
People at Enid. I just don't think we're gonna double the size of our town in the next 50 years.
Probably not, but still...
Historically, we're not.
The commercial and the industrial users are...
Yeah, and we need to really work hard on getting those here if we wanna do something like this. It's all part of the public.
Anything else, John?
Uh, no. It's an obvious, but we've assumed no growth in consumption. We assume no growth within the city or with, outside the city. So, as, as we look at, you know...
Growth in consumption of water.
Yeah, yeah, consumption of water, so...
And what's the total, total payments for this 315? What does it actually cost us over 30 years?
I think, I think the number is around 540,000, 540 million dollars, so...
Any more questions? Keep your pencil sharp, John. Thank you. Item four, present the downtown heart project update. Romy Owens is gonna do that for us. Romy? We will move out of here at 6:15, Romy.
I will be brief.
No, just be thorough.
Yeah, that was a lot of information, and I am happy to, happy to start by saying that this project won't use any water, so hopefully it will be a beautiful addition to downtown and will absolutely use none of the water resources that you're talking about. I don't have much really to update since the last time. I'm still waiting on the numbers for the Cascade Coil, which is what I had presented at the last study session to you, that we're planning on using. At least here, you have a rendering as opposed to what you had before, which was my computer-generated sketch. And it gives you a sense of what Cascade Coil would look like. It's a little bit, well, it's different than anything that we've put out there so far, but I still think it's beautiful. But until we get the firm numbers from Cascade Coil, we don't, we honestly don't know if this is going to be the surface. Yeah.
The steel is...
Steel is ready and waiting for us to say, bring it, which is very exciting. At this point now, they are being patient with me, which is a nice turn of events. We had a site meeting last Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday, honestly, sorry, I don't remember exactly what day. Last week, we had a site meeting with the construction crew, the electrician, me, Michael, Jessica, a group of us met onsite to establish a timeline. Electric should be starting this week. We had a very brief site meeting this morning between our electrician and OG&E, just to make sure that we have everything in place to know exactly where to set the juncture box that everything goes from. And as long as the weather cooperates, they should be starting to trench the line for electric this week, which will be awesome. And then our construction partner, which is ClientSign, they've been super awesome in subsidizing the cost of installation. They're about a month out, so now it just kind of becomes a schedule of trying to get the steel guys, the construction guys, me, YouthBuild, everybody on the same page to converge and get that...
Is OG&E gonna take that overhead line down?
That is their plan. I have been assured by OG&E that they intend to take those lines down.
And that won't interfere with this going up at all?
No.
Great. Cool.
Nope.
There was, in, in the newspaper the other day, they indicated that to complete this project, you were going to have to have over 280,000. Is that correct?
Yeah, I have re-launched my fundraising campaign.
How, isn't that, what, about 150,000 more than you've got right now?
Yeah, well, I mean, considering what I've spent so far on survey and architect fee and steel and the things that we've already spent, yeah.
But you're going, you're going to proceed with construction without having the money to finish it?
Yep.
How does that work?
I have enough to, to start paying people as, as we need, like we put down half on the electrician, there's, there's enough to complete the upfront costs that we have to get the frame up, and then the rest would be concrete and the Cascade Coil. And so, and that's still a ways out anyway, because we don't even know how much that's gonna be. Now, I, I know that seems crazy, but you know, like if you build it, they will come. I'm confident that the funders will come through. I, I know that there is still tremendous support for this project. I hear it every day, I see it, strangers tell me all the time how much they love this project, and I think it's really something that through grassroots funding, I'm gonna be able to overcome the budget shortfall pretty easily. I have held off in the past week on fundraising, just because the, I think that most people understand that the tone is with the teachers right now, and I'm not trying to compete with the, the attention that they need and deserve to be successful in their own, like I'm not, I don't wanna be a distraction from education, which is, should be everybody's top priority right now. But yeah, as soon as I see a pocket, I'm going, I'm going full steam with fundraising.
You, you think that you can complete this by the end of this year?
I know that I can.
Thank God, it's not 300 million dollars.
Yeah, exactly.
Can you raise that 150,000 dollars by, by the end of the year?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I did it in, I raised 130 in six months last year, and...
That's the easy part, Romy.
The first half's easier than the...
Oh, the back half always comes quicker. The back half's always...
Yeah, my experience is that...
No, with, with every fundraiser I've done, Bill, the back half's always the fast
half.
I, I'm still curious, though, this, you know, the, the whole project has changed since it was introduced to us, and this coil you're talking about, are you, is this, is this a big screen that you're going to lay down over? I, I can't still picture...
I know, it is, it's...
What you're going to cover this thing with.
It is a challenge to perceive it. Yeah, the framework is very obvious. Cascade Coil, yeah, essentially, it is a screen, and, I mean, I'm proceeding right now as though that is going to be the material. If the material comes in over budget, I'm not raising my fundraising goal again. We will find another material, and it will probably lower the budget. The Cascade Coil is the highest, it, it's shooting for the most durable aesthetic. However, I know that there are other solutions to this problem if Cascade Coil comes in over budget.
But the frame's the same.
Frame stays the same.
The lights are the same.
Lights are the same.
Nothing's really changed, except...
The landscaping's the same.
The only thing that's changed, the only thing that's changed is maybe what the outside's gonna be made of.
That's exactly.
And that was never really certain to begin with.
That's, that's a, that's a big change.
Not really.
Because the outside's all anybody's going to see.
Well, but, but Ron, this...
The outside was always gonna be some kind of mesh or screen or net or something of that nature. It was, we've never known for sure what that was gonna be.
And Ron, the shape is the same, the landscaping's the same, the lights are the same.
And I think essentially, well, well, it is super easy to kind of fixate on the pavilion, and the pavilion is obviously the most expensive part of this. The prairie and the park that is the resulting surrounding area is a, is a far more significant component to this than anything. I mean, what is being created in terms of a beautiful attraction and a park? Sorry, I just choked on my mental a little. And the stars and everything about this, you know, it's easy to kind of get lost on this one detail, but it's not the most significant detail.
When are you gonna have the quote back on the Cascade Coil?
Man, not soon enough. I, we reached out to the company on, at the beginning of March. I have followed up with, by email three times with no response. I'm frustrated.
Are your cost estimates in writing?
On everything else, on concrete, on electrician, yes.
And you said the sign company's gonna be putting up this framework for...
Mm-hmm, they're gonna help, yeah.
They've been really great with helping us with Main Street also.
Yeah. ClientSign's been really kind, and YouthBuild, of course, is a, a big partner in the labor component of what we're doing.
Have you explored the possibility at all of you not being able to come up with this funding and what your course of action is gonna be?
Yes, I have.
Good question.
Yeah, I have. We have enough to get the prairie done, we have enough to get the structure up, we have enough to do the concrete, we have enough to get it, the electric to the site, we have the lights, we have the manpower. The only unknown at this point is the surface. And if it is not Cascade, or if it is Cascade and we can't raise the money, there are other options that would be.
How much of the, that Cascade, how much of that, of the budget of that 280,000 dollars does that account for?
A quarter.
So, that's 25, 25 percent of your overall cost is that coil that goes on the top of it?
If I'm doing math right, it's like...
Big surface area?
90, 90,000.
75, 80,000 dollars.
Yeah, it's 90, so that's, I mean, and that's what I'm hopeful.
It's a third.
Yeah, it's a third. I mean, it's big, yeah. But as you all understand, because we all want the same thing, which is something that is beautiful, that everybody can be proud of, like I think that it's important to, to shoot for something that is as aesthetically beautiful as possible. And I, and that is the goal that I'm constantly working towards. And I do believe that there are other ways to achieve that, less expense, in a less expensive way, but I also want to pursue what in my heart feels the best right now, which is Cascade Coil.
And you're not asking for any more money from the city of Enid?
No.
Right. This is all, we're still talking private money?
Yep.
Private donations?
Yep. No, I'm not asking for more money. I'm not asking for, I, and I'm not even asking for large donations from individuals or companies. I really do feel strongly about grassroots fundraising, and I'm hoping to achieve this from thousands of people who give me 25 dollars. Like, I really, I believe that that, that is a possible and realistic way of approaching what is a challenging fundraising situation.
Well, once that frame is up, that's gonna be a pretty impressive...
Yeah. Yeah, because once the frame gets up and the concrete starts to move around it, I mean, the other things, like landscaping can start at that point. Like, it's hard right now to, God, trust me, it's hard. I drive past the site every day. It's hard for me to see it. I know it's hard for you to see it with its kind of just like deadness.
Who'd you say the, who'd you say the electrical contractor is?
It's Byram Electric.
Okay.
And they have been a dream to work with.
And they'll be out there in the next week or so?
Yeah.
Awesome.
We were out there at 9:00 this morning.
Go back to Jonathan's question, if you don't raise the money?
Yes.
Leans can be placed on the property, and I'm sure that lien would be against the city of Enid.
What do you mean?
I think he means if, if contractors aren't paid.
Oh, yeah, no.
If they sue you, make it...
Oh, yeah.
She has enough money to pay all the contractors. The only thing she doesn't have yet is what's gonna pay for the outside material. The only thing she doesn't have yet is what's going to pay for the outside material. And if that outside material, she'll come up with a cheaper way to do it.
She doesn't have enough money right now. She has 135,000 dollars.
Yeah.
But she hasn't.
You've got to raise money, because the 90,000 dollars only gets you to about 190,000 dollars instead of the 287.
Right.
220. But, Bill, she also hasn't hired that. I mean, she won't.
I understand that.
I understand what you're saying.
You were going to open this in April.
I know.
Today is April.
I know. No. But I also hold, hold tight to what you said, which is do it right. Doesn't matter if it's fast, just do it right. And so I'm, I'm, I want to, and I want it to be right. And, oh, I didn't, like, oh, you know, it's, what's interesting is being in this position and being in such public view with an art project, which I welcome, and I'm not, I'm not afraid of it, and it doesn't freak me out in any way, like, it, but it, things like, like leans are things that have never crossed my mind, because I don't really understand how someone could behave so unethically that it would ever come to that.
It happens probably every day.
Yeah.
Not, not a fun thing, but it.
No, no. Let's avoid that at all.
I wish you the best in your fundraising.
Thank you.
One question for you.
Sure.
Let me structure stuff with the metal. Is it going to be welded or is it going to be bolting?
The structure as it goes up.
Was it about 20, 30 feet?
Yeah, it's close to 30, mm-hmm. Yep.
Welded together or bolting?
Um, it's pinned together and it's set in concrete.
Next three items. Okay, at the, at the ridge?
No.
The ridge line going all the way across?
Yeah.
Is that going to be welded together or pinned together at the ridge?
Will.
I wish I knew what the ridge was. Thank you, sorry.
There's not a ridge line, Derwin. They're, they're towers, but there's not one.
There's not a continuous.
There's not one piece of metal following each tower, it's its own structure, supporting itself and in concrete.
There will be welded rings and then there will be a wire that will connect that top. Like, it presents as a pipe, but it's actually not.
It's not a structural ridge line.
Reason why I'm asking is because of the wind.
Yeah. Well, this is why we have a structural engineer who approves everything.
Well, this has been approved by the engineers, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, we've been, I mean, our structural engineer has been working with us tirelessly with every single time we go and make a change, and we go back and we say, can we use this? And will the weight support? And will, yeah. No, the wind is, I mean, it's a serious consideration, and we are complying with everything to make sure that it's safe. 70 percent open, secured properly, everything so that no one would be hurt, the structure won't fall over. Yeah, yeah, we were really, I mean, yeah, structural engineer is important. That's what they get, that's what they're making the big money for.
Reason, reason why I'm asking, Robbie, because with that being that high?
Mm-hmm.
You need a span at the bottom.
Mm-hmm.
You're with at the bottom with support, like a pyramid.
Yep.
But if you have it as narrow as I see it here?
Yeah.
That's just something to think about.
Yep. Well, yep. I mean, we're buried in four feet of concrete, so, yeah.
Whatever the structural engineer says.
Yep, I'm confident that between.
What people's structural engineers do.
The engineers and the architects, that they have solved all of those problems.
Shoot.
Are there any other questions that I can answer for you?
Anyone else?
I have faith in you.
Tammy?
Nope, I said I have faith in you.
Yeah, thank you, Tammy. Thank you, I appreciate it.
We're going to defer item five, six, and seven until our next meeting. You are adjourned, we'll meet upstairs at 6:10.
I'm so excited about the sound application.
Thank you for watching the Enid City Commission Study Session. All meetings are broadcast on local cable channel 12 and in high definition on channel 112. In addition, the study session is live streamed on the web at enidtv.org. If you have any questions or comments regarding this broadcast, please visit the city of Enid website at enid.org.